Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And welcome to the Planning Commission for August tenth, two thousand nine. This evening I'll call the meeting to order and ask any public comment on any item not listed on the agenda this evening. Seeing none, we'll move forward to our first hearing. This is CP zero-nine dash zero-one. At this time, I'd like to see if, ask if any of the commissioners have any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare that you have not already addressed.
I've nothing further to declare. I'd like to, because some people may be tuning in tonight for the first time, haven't really followed this process, I want to kind of go back through mine again. Yeah, this process has been going on for, I'm not sure, four months, five months. So several people may be just tuning into it. What are the results of this? So I just want to kind of go through my three, the three pieces of criteria here for how we are to be judged as we vote on this. So there are three, there are three criteria as a planning commissioner that we need to meet to be eligible. And the first one is an ex parte contact, which essentially indicates that you have to divulge any meetings or conversations that you've had outside of this, outside of this forum here. And that one, I've been to two McLaughlin Neighborhood Association meetings along the way and have been an observer. I've asked some questions. The second one is biased. Can I make a decision based on the applicable criteria? And then the third one is conflict of interest. And basically what this is getting at is will I gain monetarily if the project is approved or not approved? And what I want to point out as we discuss the deliberation tonight is I have a unique perspective for this application. I live within three hundred feet of the site and use this upper area particularly extensively. This is basically my backyard. I have, I have strong feelings about this site. I spend most, I spend more time on this site daily than just about anybody here. I recognize some people as dog walkers in this little area. And of course, this is a little node in the city where several of us have found that we gather, so this, this site is pretty important to me. I'm concerned with traffic, noise, pollutants, and the rest of the items brought forward to date, but I feel that I can be an impartial judge despite the location that I have and that I can rule fairly on this, on behalf of the city. And so as a result of my sort of unique position, where I live, I want to throw that back to anybody in the public that has any issue with me as a planning commissioner voting on this application.
At this point, the public hearing is closed for comments, so we'll have to-
So we can't have any-
Can't have any of that. You can disagree to disagree.
Okay.
Any other comments? Are you sure that's, no? Okay, very good. Staff, do you have any comments before we-
So as you're, as you're aware, you know, hopefully you received all the information as we did, you may recall at the last hearing, we continued it for two weeks for additional written comment and another two weeks for additional comment in response, and then two weeks for the applicant's final rebuttal, all of which has been forwarded to you, was posted online. Since the hearing's closed, you know, you can certainly ask questions of staff or the city attorney to try and help you answer any questions that you may have during your deliberations in coming up with your decision that you do make tonight, if you are able to do that. I guess one clarification, we gave you a staff report with conditions of approval for your consideration, which you certainly, certainly can amend in any way, add additional conditions if you feel are appropriate, et cetera, et cetera. One issue that was brought up as part of the public comment dealt with the conflict of interest by the city attorney. In the memorandum, we provided the city's position on that conflict of interest. If you have any questions about that, we'd be happy to, to try and address those. And one of the other issues brought up was concerning the location of Waterboard Park. Waterboard Park was, was created by a vote of the people. And in this city charter, I'm going to go ahead and read you what the city charter says. This is already in the record. It was provided by the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. The area designated as Waterboard Park on the map of Oregon City revised nineteen sixty-nine and the adjoining areas thereof lying between the high bluff, the westerly end of which area is at the south westerly corner of Track Nineteen, Fields Edition, and the easterly end of which area is approximately at the intersection of Quarry and Third Streets, except any portion thereof lying north of the road running from John Adams Street and the extension thereof around the south side of the armory and connecting the South Second Street. Waterboard Park as above described is designated as St. Natural Park. And there was questions raised about the location of the south property line, so the property line separating Waterboard Park from the project site. The applicant has submitted a survey that they had performed, the, the Fields Edition plat, to try and show you the due diligence that's gone into trying, identifying where this property actually is located. Today, if you record a property, you have meets and bounds, you have monuments to come off of to identify the exact location of a property line, you have pins and corners, et cetera, et cetera. In this description, it relied on, and specifically our concern is the portion thereof lying north of the road running from John Adams Street and the extension thereof around the south side of the armory and connecting the South Second Street. The road that they're referencing was never a public road. It's, it's never been recorded, it's not on a plat, it's not on a partition, it's not on a subdivision. The exact location of that road is, does not have any legal description for its exact location. So the applicant worked with the survey crew to try and identify where that property line is located in between Waterboard and the project site. It's very difficult, as you know, walking out on the site because of the topography change from Waterboard Park as it flattens out onto the, the Public Works' current upper yard, there's no remnants of the location of that old road. So the, you know, the question before the commission is, you know, based on the evidence provided by the applicant, the survey work done, the, you know, went back, tried to look through historical records to try and identify the location of that road, is, is that sufficient to address your concerns as submitted by the McLaughlin Neighborhood concerning the location of that southern boundary? You know, an alternative would be to ask the applicant to go back, do additional work to try and verify, but, so that's one concern staff has, and then bring that forward to your attention in just that we cannot pinpoint down to the, you know, exact foot where this road referenced in the charter actually was because we don't have any legal description of where it was. So, and, and so yes, as we were talking about, we could, we could add a condition that asks the applicant to go back, do further study to try and identify that and, you know, record a lot line adjustment to, to more appropriately match if they do find a discrepancy. But at this point, I can't, I can't say that it's incorrect and just with the, with the information that I have, it's, it's the one gray area that it does raise some question that, that you may need to consider.
Okay? Thank you.
I have a question then. I'm looking at the City of Oregon City Public Works Center Plan that was prepared, so our booklet there, and I'm looking at phase four. I suppose we could look at any of the phases, but that, that's as good as any, and it shows a property, the property line then around the armory area. So what it's showing, I'll wait till everybody gets it.
Go ahead.
So what it's showing then, on the right-hand side, it says maintain access to the park. That's great. So then I'm watching this property line and as the little road heads up, the property line starts to bisect it, in fact, it looks like it pinches it and severs it actually enough that there is no access up through Waterboard Park. And that would be a concern of mine that that property is actually not, the, the access way actually is, is, is on the public works side as opposed to the, the park side. And then my follow-up question is how do we deal with that, given that one of the objectives here is that there would be access, you know, pedestrian access up through the, the park itself? So as long as that can get, in my mind, rectified so that the access still maintains, whose property it is, is, I suppose, becomes irrelevant to me, as long as the access is still granted through the Public Works' property, assuming this is approved.
And I guess there's a couple, a couple remedies. Well, first, you know, whether that be a lot line adjustment to put it completely on Waterboard Park or just an access easement recorded over the property that guarantees public access across that. One, one concern, you know, not that it's a concern, you know, these, these, these plans are done, done very well, you know, just because that's where it's, you know, if it, if that's the exact location of that road, you know, what we find sometimes is you have right-ofways and the roads aren't actually in the right-ofway, they might be offset a little bit due to topography or whatnot, just based off of the old documents that we had, you know, we, we had a recorded right-ofway location, but the road was built five feet out of it, you know, that, that does occur sometimes. But that being said, let's just say everything is correct. I think you have two remedies there to address that concern.
Okay.
All right. Any other comments at this time? So then, let's move forward. I, first, I want to thank the applicant, the consultants, the Neighborhood Association, and the citizens who came forward to give comment on this application. It was a good open process, and I think all parties were professional and intelligent in their approach to the many challenges this application uncovered. While there are many pieces to this puzzle, I believe that we all have a more thorough idea of the challenges that will be faced in a decision of this magnitude. As a reminder, the public hearing has been closed and no additional public testimony will be taken this evening. The quasi-judicial process is tightly controlled by state law. The Planning Commission must make their decision based on facts and the applicable approval criteria only. Tonight, we will be deliberating this application. But first, I wanted to take a moment to speak about master planning. I'd like to get this on the record. For too long, development in Oregon City has been, in my opinion, under plan. That's why this Planning Commission instituted the master planning process for major developments in our comprehensive plan. It gives us all a chance to see what the long-term plan for development is and gives us a chance to review these plans in an early stage so that impacts to public infrastructure and possible mitigation could be identified long before ground is broken. The fact is, a master plan is just that, a plan. It doesn't mean it will ever happen. If the economic stability of a business, or the city in this case, doesn't justify the expense of the planned development, the plan may never come to fruition. But on the flip side, if things change for the business in a positive way and growth demands it, the business will have a plan from which to operate. This is good planning. If additional development must occur beyond what is expressed in the plan, the comprehensive plan requires this additional change to be reviewed. Any development identified by the master plan must then meet all additional building criteria set out in design guidelines and standards. When developing a master plan, the applicant, in some cases, steps outside the box as the company tries to envision the long-term needs of their client, or in this case, of the city, the citizens now and in the future. Assumptions are made about properties they may or may not own, or about growth that may or may not ever materialize. In saying this, I now bring this application to the Planning Commission for deliberation and decision. As always, we have appreciated your input, and we also appreciate your continued professionalism as we deliberate this application. So at this, I'll bring it up to you gentlemen, and we'll move forward.
Chair Powell.
Yes, sir.
Our responsibility as a planning commission is to approve or deny the application based on applying the facts that have been articulated during the public hearing process to the Oregon City Municipal Code. While the record was open, we learned about a number of issues of concern to city residents. These included, are the improvements requested by the plan needed at this place and time? What about traffic impacts on South John Adams and Center Street, South Center Street? Noise? What about history, the geology of the area? Environmental sensitivity? What about property values and health issues? What about parking? What about the impacts to Waterboard Park? What about the scale of development, of this development, or the scale of the proposed building? What about bending the rules? We've read reports from industry professionals concerning the traffic issues, noise, odor, health, environmental issues, geological issues, the historical issues, and other issues. I believe the applicant has done due diligence to understand all of the concerns expressed and identify and propose appropriate mitigations to address them. The Oregon City Operations Division has big responsibilities in Oregon City. Responsibilities include administration, our streets, wastewater, stormwater management, fleet management, public projects, and code enforcement. It's clear, and I don't think it was disputed, that the current operations facility is inadequate. If you've been in there, like I've been in there, the offices are cramped. We know that staff is scattered about the city in various locations. The structures on the site are dilapidated and the existing space is not being used as efficiently as it could be used. It's also clear that the current location has been used in a maintenance capacity for at least back to nineteen twenty-five, when it was used for water pipe storage and gravel mining. Its institutional use was given to the War Department during the Second World War. Our cities recognize the limitations of the current facility layout, and in two thousand and five, our city commission decided that it made sense to move forward with plans to modernize this facility in order to make the best use of the city's limited resources. The Oregon City Comprehensive Plan states that better coordination of services and improved operating efficiency are highly desirable when possible. The comprehensive plan also supports development on underdeveloped or vacant buildable land within the city where public facilities are available or can be provided, and when compatibility can be found relative to the environment, zoning, and comprehensive plan goals. The comprehensive plan calls for incorporating measures to meet long-term rising demand for services. Demand for services that we've seen, I think, since the housing bubble began in the year two thousand, and I think that the city's operations center has done well to make that facility work for us up to this point. Our code does not require that the applicant use this type-three process, this quasi-judicial process, to implement the site upgrades and efficiencies that are described, since this site is less than ten acres. However, the applicant decided to use this process. This allowed concerns to be raised and addressed in a productive, responsible, and transparent way. Using these processes and the public forum provides full disclosure and inhibits bending of the rules. We have to decide whether the current and future use of the site are consistent with the institutional zone classification. Based on all of the facts I have learned, I believe that it is. We also have to decide whether the plan is consistent with the city's code requirements for master plans. We have to decide whether the project will foster the growth of major institutions and other large-scale development while identifying and mitigating the impacts of such growth on surrounding properties and public, and public infrastructure. This is key to providing the applicant with assurance needed over the long term so that the plan can be executed successfully over that time. I think the plan is consistent with this requirement. I agree with the staff report that the transportation system and public services for water, grease, fire, sanitary waste, and stormwater disposal are capable of serving the development. I also agree with the staff report that although no goal-five natural, historic, or cultural resources were identified on the site, that the applicant will perform actions cited in conditions of approval to create value from the existing resources that have been identified. In order to make the best use of the four and a half acres of usable space and to create a modern, responsible, and efficient operations center for the entire city, I support the five adjustments to the development standards being requested, as well as the associated conditions of approval for those. I agree with Dr. Jerry Herman's suggestion and would offer a condition of approval to be added. Dr. Herman suggested adding interpretive signage noting the basalt flows and the cooling effect colonades. He suggested those be installed adjacent to the park pathways. The signage could describe the relationship between people's needs, public works, and the reality of Oregon City's lands. I also suggest that interpret, that an interpretive history display could be installed in the lobby of the new building that would acknowledge the early leaders of the Armory's Company D, as Dr. Herman suggested. You know, in, in, all in all, I support the staff's recommendation of the plan and the associated conditions of approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Stein.
I'll, I'll go next.
Commissioner Liz Waugh.
Sure. Just some general comments here. I've functioned as a planning commissioner over the last five and a half years, and I've worked with and witnessed firsthand our city staff and their overall intent, intentions with lots of projects. We're really blessed that they're truly committed to making our city great, and we are fortunate to have the caliber of people working on our behalf to make our city great again, because it's not great now. The concept, the concept that the city started with here was to centralize the public works facility for our city, to find a location. It's not only a sustainable concept, but it also creates a significant, creates significant efficiencies for our city and its overall operations. There's tax dollar implications when we're scattered, and I hope people can appreciate that. Neighborhoods, even historic ones, have all different kinds of uses. They have, and even in the McLaughlin, we have retail, we have office, we have things like churches. So there's more than just residences in, in this kind of neighborhood. And I don't think that this, I don't believe at all that this kind of facility is necessarily a detriment to this area. We've heard over the course of the last four months, the last four months, a lot of what we'll call nimbyism, not in my backyard, needs to be somewhere else. And I suspect all the points that were brought up by people would actually, all those points would just transfer over to another neighborhood or another section of town, so we have to deal with it someplace. So it's been a little bit, actually, it's been quite normal to hear some of the comments, but the fact of the matter is, is that it's got to be someplace. These kinds of facilities need to be someplace. And again, I don't believe that just because it's a historic district that that should automatically preclude it from being a, a possible candidate. There's, there's, there's no question, there's been a lot of legitimate concerns that have been raised about traffic, big trucks, the amount of usage, which is actually quite minimal when you look at the actual data. The, most of the dump trucks, most of these large trucks, they're not even used every single day. They're used here and there now and then. There's a, what's called the cut-through traffic offset, where currently people, and actually, one citizen is, is against this application, has testified and has placed some signage, that now this will become a dead end, that you can't do any cut-through traffic and, and, and now that we, and if that's true, and we can't cut through and only vehicles can come out, there's an offset there, and what happens in this particular case is there'll actually be less traffic in this area than more traffic, just because of the cut-through. The other aspect of traffic would be the armory operations, what's currently operating there. Their traffic is being relocated and it's being offset. The time of the day and trips into and out of the site, that's relevant for traffic. If this were approved, we'd actually have no evenings or weekend traffic around this area. It's just, it's a very, it's a small window of time during the day, five days a week, from, from seven o'clock till five, till four. There's been other legitimate concerns about buffering, screening, edges, which are completely legitimate. There's been some concerns about the height of the new office building. Pedestrian access to Waterboard Park from both the north side and the south side. Diesel fumes, toxins, noise, and real estate values, these are all legitimate concerns. Particular to this application, I think the idea of centralizing is a good one, and given how close that it will be to other city offices that are planned in the near future, it's easy to see that this could make a lot of sense for the city in a lot of respects. The other really compelling thing for me about this particular site is, is really the uniqueness of the upper portion. You know, with trucks and gravel and storage of these kinds of items, you're always looking for a spot where you can get these things out of the way, we sure don't want them on Main Street, kind of thing. And the fact that this little enclave back here, this little section on the upper area is this nestled little pocket in the basalt with virtually, excuse me, nobody can, nobody can see it, or virtually nobody. It's, it's always impossible to get this thing perfect, but the reality is, is at the end of my street, I see it, but not many other people really see it. So it's actually quite a unique piece of, piece of land there that we can hide all this stuff, because that's the idea. If we had some open field, there'd be just tons of money spent into how do we hide it, because nobody would want to see it. So this is an important part for me about why this particular site is, is a prime candidate. There's been some concern about how much overall land this is taking, that some of the early studies said that we need five acres and six acres and seven acres, and in fact, they've got this thing to work in a very small footprint. And then there's, so that, so what I've heard from that is, is how can that be? How can that be? I'm giving kudos, big time, to the city and their design team for actually what they've been able to do. And I suspect that other jurisdictions who have more acreage for this kind of thing, that they're, they use their land rather inefficiently, and I think that this has been a very streamlined and very efficient little plan. I, I also don't see that this facility and this site, the way that it's planned, would be the end-all for all future public works needs, and that eventually another site, probably up the hill, will be needed. But at this point, I see that this site is appropriate and adequate. I also don't see in the future why the McLaughlin Neighborhood would need to bear all of the public work needs, public works needs for the entire city. It just wouldn't be fair either. That's just not fair. So to me, this project is about what's projected is probably about as big as I think that we could probably handle in this little area without going too far. I'd like to compliment the city staff for their diligence addressing the concerns throughout this process, especially as it relates to the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association concern, concerns. I'd also really like, and I can, I can definitely speak firsthand to this, I'd like to compliment the public works drivers over the years. They are courteous, they drive very slow, they understand these little streets, they're, they're more than accommodating, more than accommodating for what they, for what they do to that neighborhood. I, I don't see them as a detriment at the end of my street. I, I see them, every time I see them, I trust them a lot more than I trust the drive-through traffic. So I think it's an, it's an advantage. I'd like to most definitely compliment DECA architects for their work to date. If this application is approved, I hope that DECA is able to do future design work associated with this application, particularly the office building. We are very fortunate to have them on this team. They possess the ability to make this project an exemplary project. These guys are really good. They're just, they are very much the consummate good design team that you'd want to have on any sort of project like this. on any sort of project like this. So generally, I'm in favor of this application, and again, based on the approval criteria, but even more importantly, that it makes good overall sense for our city. Before I cast my vote, though, I will say that I will need a number of condition of approvals, which we'll talk about here, either added or altered to the application for it to work for me and to get my final approval. I have no issues to speak of the adjustments requested. That was another point that the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association brought up, is the fact that the city was asking for adjustments. This is very typical of this type of master planning process where the applicant has some ability to ask for adjustments. They've asked for five, and I see, I'm not even going to go through the five, but I see no problem with any of them, none of them at all. So that's kind of where I stand on it. I think I can approve it if I can get some of the conditions of approval, and we can talk about that after the other commissioners sort of say their part, but we can come back to that.
Thank you. Commissioner Lojoa. Commissioner Danner?
Well, not to irritate the rest of the commissioners, I just got back from the beach and had a fine sample here. I guess I see this process, concept plan, it's kind of like taking an object and fine-tuning it and having some friction from staff and from the planning commission and from people in the community. And out of that, you start smoothing things out and making this a more workable plan. And I think that's where, if you take a look at the conditions of approval, most of those are, came out of this process of input. And personally, I'm really impressed with the identification of problems with this project and the mitigations that have been put forth in the conditions of approval. There are four things that I guess I keyed on when I went back through this, is that the Historic Review Board, in my opinion, has done a phenomenal job in the past of protecting our resources, at least from my three years' experience. And when they said, hey, this is okay, that helped me buy into this, this is appropriate for this area. And I talked about the identification and mitigation. I think going through this, it looks like most of the problems have been covered. I am a little concerned about traffic and turn ratios, but for the most part, I think the issues have been covered. I think, and you mentioned the opportunities here. I looked at that. I've been up to the site a couple of times now, and I looked at it, and I think this has got to improve. And I see this as a great opportunity for some creative development there. I just, I think it's a very workable site, and with some creativity, I think there can be some real good things coming out of this. And I think this applicant has every reason to be a model or produce a model for this site, and I think it's going to happen. So in that respect, I think we're on the right track. I would support the two recommendations, Paul, the one you talked about, and then the one with the signage and the interpretive, I think is a real good one, too. And I think, as Chairman, you point out, this is a process, and we're just getting into it, and there's many more steps and chances for review and to see how this is going to work out. But I think, for the most part, I can support this.
Thank you, Commissioner Danner. Commissioner Danner?
So I think most of, a lot of things that I had been thinking about have been covered, and to be honest, I've gone back and forth quite a bit on this project and this proposal, specifically, starting with traffic and digging deeper, sort of looked at the traffic impact studies, and tend to agree with Commissioner Lojoa that these are going to be the limited impacts that are not as daily as necessarily we already see. And also, historically, as I think back, going through the years, this really was a pass-through street in years past, but it really no longer is. It doesn't serve as that function anymore. And take a look at what do we need to be able to do with these type of properties. Hadn't really thought about the Commissioner Lojoa's point of what a better place to sort of put these large structures that otherwise could be in ISO or in other parts of the city, and I think that's a strong point for this area as well. But I guess the last, the few last few points that have sort of drug me along across the finish line are sort of the folks I've spoken with in the community that actually do support it, who I would have otherwise had thought would have been opposed to it, including Dr. Herman, Jerry Herman for one, and a number of others, and really made me go back from, to be honest, what I, on first glance, had looked at thinking, this just doesn't fit. This just doesn't fit for the community, in my opinion, which I've also come to find out as a commissioner isn't necessarily something that I could vote up or down on as a criteria for approval or not. But made me go back and take a look at what I think this could be and opportunities that we could utilize this for as another civic center. And, you know, I really think, I think we've got some work to do, and I do agree that this is just a part of a longer process, and I really hope, and that is my larger concern, is the development and the design stage, actually, when and if this is approved on the building portion, on the actual office-based portion, is more of my concern. But with that, and with, you know, some more strong public input going further through the process, which I know the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association will help drive, I think it's, it looks like something I will be able to support as well.
Commissioner Danner?
Yes?
You mentioned at the beginning of your testimony that you had an opportunity to talk to people who were in favor of the project.
Yes.
Those people were here in this?
You know, these were more general conversations in the community, and I cannot answer if they were just people that had testified or not. And they didn't introduce themselves as, whether they had testified or not, it was more solicitation or casual conversations that I had had, so.
Okay. Well, we've disclosed it on the record now, so let's give anyone an opportunity to question you further about that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm not seeing anyone.
Okay.
Thanks for putting it on the record.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Danner. I apologize if I repeat things that other people have said, but with my age, I have to write some things down, so I don't forget them. First off, Chapter 1739 clearly identifies the public facilities and maintenance as a permitted use in this area. The question is, is this compatible with the surrounding areas? I say by virtue of the fact that this facility has been at the current location for many years, and that the upper area has been used consistently as a storage yard, I believe that yes, that does constitute compatibility. While the larger question is how this facility will work in the overall scheme of the neighborhood in which it resides, I believe that the applicant has shown that even at a full build-out, if in fact that were to ever come to fruition, they have shown appropriate mitigation plans that address most all of the concerns that have been raised throughout the process. Vehicle traffic will be funneled into neighboring streets at a safe and manageable speed while mitigating noise and emission concerns. The traffic study and our own traffic consultants show that current and future traffic will not cause substantial delays or excessive degradation of the traffic. While much has been said about additional city developments in the neighborhood causing additional traffic congestion, that unfortunately is not part of this application and therefore cannot be considered. Suitability of a public works storage yard in a neighborhood is clearly not an optimal solution. But again, this facility has successfully co-resided in this neighborhood for years. Considering that the shop buildings and the storage yard are at this extreme edge of the neighborhood, I find that citing a four-story building next to the bluff will not significantly affect the character of the neighborhood. Yes, if built, it will be a considerable mass of building, but our design guidelines will help us minimize that massing. I believe that the enhancements identified in the plan for the area adjoining the park will far outweigh the concerns about adjusted setbacks. I believe the applicant has met the purpose and intent of this chapter. By phasing the development, the applicant has shown a logical approach for an orderly build cycle that should minimize the impacts on the neighborhood during each phase of construction. I believe the conditions of approval address potential mitigation of air quality and noise, traffic, unintentional access to the site, safety, and enhanced access to the park. Sewer, water, and drainage have also been sufficiently addressed and mitigated through conditions of approval. It's not unusual for developments such as this to have many conditions of approval or requests for modification to existing dimensional standards. In fact, these types of adjustments are requested often to fit the uniqueness of building sites in Oregon City. I'd like to address a specific concern I heard during the previous testimony. As it relates to location, I believe the applicant made a considerable effort to research other sites in the city, considering that the city commissioner's direction to continue use of this site in the future, as well as the financial implications to the citizens of this city in not utilizing property already owned by the city. So considering these factors and the proximity to Highway 99, as well as Fifth and Seventh Streets, I believe that this is the most appropriate site for this facility. I do believe, and I'd like to consider it a condition of approval, that the applicant fully utilized the hilltop location before fully utilizing the new location, meaning in your, in previous testimony, you mentioned that there was more room to build up at the hilltop location, and I would make sure, I'd like to make sure that that's completely utilized before fully utilizing the dislocation that we speak of this evening. I do think it's important that we verify the site boundary and the issue that the staff brought up this evening. I would like to make sure that public access to the park is guaranteed and that we review that and make sure that that's in the application. And I also agree with the interpretive signage adjacent to the pathways. I think that's critical to what we're trying to accomplish in our neighborhood, and I think it's critical to what we're trying to accomplish in our city. So with that, we have more questions we'd like to talk about?
Yeah.
Conditions of approval or additions or changes? So Commissioner Lojoa?
Sure, I'll start. So I've got a number of them here that I want to discuss with the other planning commissioners and see where this goes. I guess the first one I've got, though, is if, assuming that we're all heading in the same direction here, it now comes down for me to the details, the details. This is just a master plan, so there's some details that are, that I think need a little bit more resolution, and they can't just be left to, it'll just, the process will take care of it. I'm not sure that the process maybe will. We have what's called a detailed development plan. The city has one, which would be the next level. The applicant, it's the choice of the applicant, the city, to do a detailed development plan or not. They're proposing not to. Is there a reason that we can't have a detailed development plan?
No. So the applicant had the option to do a concept master plan or not, based on the size of the property. A detailed development plan under the master planning process is essentially a site plan and design review process, so all development will be required to go through the detailed development plan. As long as it's consistent with the approved master plan, it'll be done as a Type II decision, which is done by staff, and includes noticing property owners within 300 feet, posting the site, notifying the neighborhood association. If they deviate from the approved master plan, and we have thresholds in there that say, you know, you add more than 10% square footage of building than approved, then they would need to come back and amend their master plan. But each one of these steps in here need to go through a detailed development plan for building construction.
Okay, and it's a public review?
Correct.
Okay. Because a lot of these may be taken up in there, and maybe we want to attach them then to the conditions of approval here. So I'll kind of go through in detail. Let's look at, I'd like everybody to look at, in our book, again, that Phase Four, let's just kind of jump right to the end of it here. There's some areas here that I have some concern still about. There's reference through all our documents about these outcroppings on the upper portion. And there's actually two significant outcroppings and tree areas. The first one is located where, right in the middle of the page where it says the sign machine, welding shops, the storage, that building right there. There's kind of one right in there. There's also one that's actually shown here, and it's still in green, and it's just to the right and up from there, and it's sort of a oval shape there on the north end of the site, sort of the northeast end of the site. And that also is a rock outcropping area, and so I just want to make sure that, I'm wondering, there's a couple of things that I want to say about that. For one thing, the fence on that one runs on the public side of that one right there. So where it says turnaround right there, the fence is right adjacent to, because this is really important to the details, because if the idea is to disguise, to make this go away, to put this fence at that location, I think is just really counterproductive. It could be on the backside of that, on the left-hand side of that, and I'm just wondering if we would want to, you know, this little green area here is actually an area that creates probably the last bit of the buffer, you might say, between the neighborhood and this area here, and I don't want to lose that. I don't want, at some point, because this is just a master plan, for that whole area to get wiped out and put parking there or some other building there, because then we don't have any screening there. So I'm wondering if we can actually set that little area up as a reserve. I don't know if we can or not, or as a green area. So that would be a question, I guess, for staff, first of all, if we can do that.
So you want to move the fence so that it's on the other side?
On the other side. So that'd be one part of it. Because there's really no reason that we have to have the fence on that side, it just becomes an ugly fence.
So the fence would be adjacent to the covered van parking?
Yes, yes. So put the fence on that side and actually retain that area as some sort of reserve. It's really interesting, out of the whole forest, and if we included this little area here, there's more wildlife and more birds on this little area than up in the forest. I can attest to that 100%. For some reason, the wildlife down at the edge of the cliff here is much more plentiful than up top. So it'd be nice to be able to retain that, and also, and I just don't want, when this goes from master plan to actual execution, that things kind of get moved around in here, and they say, well, let's wipe out that rock outcropping. I think that that's a really big mistake, so I want to protect against that.
My sense is that if it deviated too much from this plan, like Tony said, you'd have to come back around before you.
Okay, that's fine.
So I think that, as long as the plan substantially conforms to this, Tony would have to tell us what the thresholds are right here. I don't.
Yes, and that's really what I'm getting at, is what is that, you know, how much latitude? Now, when it leaves here, does?
But I think certainly we could do a condition that encourages the preservation of this area. The question is, how are we going to identify this area?
Yeah.
For purposes of condition.
What do we got? You getting a map?
Yeah. Excellent.
If this were, if this were made up.
So the area that I'm talking, so there's a rock outcropping right in here right now, trees, rocks, and so in the staff report, it talks about that they're going to remove those rock outcropping, and I'm okay with that one. You know, I'm okay with that one. This one here is the one that I'm talking about right here. And the fence right now, I'm trying to hold it as steady as I can, but the fence right now is shown like this. Yeah, the fence is shown like this. And what I'm saying is, is as you're walking down John Adams and you're looking this way, this is an important little, you can see as you're coming down that that's a great edge, and that's a great edge, and there's some things happening here, so that you can, we can start to really block this end off visually, so that the neighborhood isn't as impacted when they go to use the park itself. So the thought was, is maybe this could be a reserve, but if the idea is that this still gets retained as landscaping, and I guess that's a question for Tony, how much latitude does the city have with regards to that? Because again, I don't want that to be removed. Tony?
He's working on it. Can we go on to the next question?
Sure.
And we'll get back to you on that one?
Okay, sure. I've got a concern right here. There's a homeowner on this property here who accesses his property right here, and there used to be a house right here, and the city has actually purchased this property now to make way for this entire, this entire project. But after they bought the house, they kind of leveled a bunch of things in here and have moved some gravel and some other things in here. And I'm concerned with this edge right here, because what's happened in that is, when the city went ahead and did this, just recently, in the last six, eight months, this is a little higher platform, we'll say, a little higher in grade than down here, and a bunch of rocks and boulders have fallen down and actually hit his head. and boulders have fallen down and actually hit his house. And I guess what I, I guess I'm not opposed to vacating the First Street, just, I'm not opposed to, to vacating First Street, because it can never happen, there's too much topography change right here. What I am concerned, though, that when this all gets built, that there isn't another episode here where this is impacting the citizen right here. Let me keep going. The stormwater detention facility right here is shown, I, I think what I'd really like to see myself is, this is another one of these opportunities where at the end of a neighborhood, and just before you enter a park, we've got this facility that's going to need to happen here anyway, it always, it already functions like that right now, but, but the city is going to be doing some additional work on this area, and I think, I would like to see, and I'm not exactly sure how we do this, but I think that this should be a public review process in and of itself, the design of this. I think that the neighborhood has a great deal to say about how this gets used, what it looks like. It still needs to perform that function, but I've seen lots of these where it becomes rocks and boulders and sitting area and very pleasant, a very pleasant spot as opposed to something that is ugly. Again, this is all about the details, this is all about edges. How do we hide this kind of facility? I want to make sure, I want to make sure in the conditions of approval, and it's been, it's been discussed in a lot of our, in a lot of, the last four months, but I want to make sure that public access, because these are potential properties that the city may over time purchase for this project. And I want to make sure that there always is a pedestrian access from this section of McLaughlin neighborhood up into the, up into the park. And we've already talked about this one here, this is a new one that will join up at this location right here, but I want to make sure that maybe as a part of the condition of approval, that we do in fact have two pedestrian access points, this one here and that this one gets retained. And I talked about that a little bit earlier. Here's that area where as you're walking up, the property line of this property looks like you can't really quite cross, so we need to rectify that somehow, whether it's an access agreement or we change the property to be on that side of the little pedestrian path.
And I, and, and on that, that portion behind the armory, I would just remind the commission that the city doesn't currently own that. It's owned by the state at this point, you know, so we can't force another property owner to implement that. Now, if the city moves forward with acquisition of that property, I think if you wrote the condition in that manner, that when the city acquires that property, they shall provide an access easement to protect in perpetuity is appropriate, but at this point, it'd be difficult for the city to dictate to the state to provide an access easement. So just for your consideration.
Another detail, and this has been brought up before, is that there's a fueling station as a part of this facility, and right now it's being located really at one of the only spots that you can actually see into this facility. You actually see the, the sides of buildings here, and, and yet, we walk through here and we see probably the ugliest thing imaginable actually here. So, you know, I, I wish that we could kind of flip some things around, and again, this is a detail, but I'm not sure that it won't be done this way. Can we get the fueling station maybe back here and switch all this stuff to here, put a wall along this side? Seeing the, the faces of walls is always better than, than these kinds of things right The other point that I want to make is, there's a certain set of assumptions about growth projections for future staff and the future number of vehicles, and I want to make sure that at some point in time, let's say 10, 12, 15 years from now, that this does, this doesn't continue on and then five more trucks get added and 15 more staff. Is there, is, does that sort of come with the territory, the fact that the application has already said that there's going to be this many people and this many trucks? Because at some point, it gets past us and it's 10 years later, have they added six more trucks instead of three? Or 12 more trucks instead of three? Then all of a sudden, this plan doesn't make sense to me, because it's getting to be too intense for this neighborhood. So I want some provision that, in fact, that the numbers given in the application are actually representative of really what's going to be there, and if something happens where public works grows drastically, that they just don't assume that they can continue on putting more trucks, more vehicles, more staff in this, in this entire project.
Under the master plan code for determining when an amendment needs to come before the planning commissioner staff for a type-one decision, it needs to come back in front of the planning commission for proposals that increase the amount, frequency, or scale of a use over 10% of what was approved. So that's kind of the threshold identified to bring it back to the planning commission, so...
10%?
Correct.
This project is thought to be, by the city, is, it wants to be a super sustainable and very green project, and with that, I want to bring up a couple of points. The first one is, is that as we dismantle some of these existing facilities, which are pretty much disrepair, that, that we actually deconstruct them, not demolish them. I think all of this stuff can be recommissioned to do something, and, and it's a small technicality, but I think it's an important one, because it's important that when we, when we, in any kind of project, that when we decide to start anew, what do we do with the existing? It's a sustainable thought that we have to salvage all that stuff somehow. There's lots of good use for that kind of stuff. So, I think we need to replace the word demolition with a lot of the stuff with deconstruct. It would be my, would be my take on this, and I think it's important. Along with that, let's see, in one of the neighborhood meetings, which is, which is part of the record, this relates to sustainability and, and building green again. This is one of the neighborhood meetings with McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, and there was a comment about encouraging sustainable design, perform solar analysis of the site for solar technologies and, and those kinds of things, and the response from staff was, it is the intent, it is the intention to design the buildings to be sustainable and to meet a minimum of LEED Silver Certification. And for those that don't know what that means, LEED is a, an agency which looks at construction and evaluates how, how well they're performing in a sustainable sense, and Silver is, is second to the highest level. But the thing that it says here is, it's the intention to design the buildings to be sustainable and to meet the minimum of LEED, and I, I guess I, I don't find that, and given the city's stance on sustainability, a strong enough statement. I think what we want to say there is that the buildings need to be LEED, LEED certified is my recommendation. You know, the city encourages other applications to raise the bar as it relates to sustainability matters, and so I just, I just sort of feel like this is the, the right thing for the city to do, is to take this challenge, and not, the intent is to do it, but that we're actually doing it. I just, it's a little bit soft to me on the language. So those are my smaller kind of bullets about what I think the conditions of approval need to say, in addition to the ones that we already have. So I'm open for comments, suggestions, or...
I have the, moving the fence by the, the rock outcrop, there's the vacating of First Street, there's an access easement to the park, two entrances, there's moving the fueling station, so it's outside line of sight, there's the capacity limitation that you're talking about with respect to the number of people and vehicles that are identified in this plan being exceeded in the future, deconstruction versus demolition, and then the LEED certification. Those are all of them? So the one I don't understand quite, I think, is the First Street vacation. Can you go over that one again?
Yeah, sure. So... Maybe I'm pointing the wrong way now. This way? Yep. So, right now, that area right there is actually, you know, here's properties on this side and that side, this side, that side. Right now, First Street, and this happens a lot in the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association, just because of topography, these streets will never go through, this is a 40-foot cliff. So, there, the staff has recommended vacating this and, and acquiring, or actually taking half of it, and then the other half goes to the other property owners, and I just want to make sure that in doing that, that we've actually solved the, I mean, inherently, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make sure that where we put this line and where the edge of things are, aren't impacting that neighbor once again, who, you know, he didn't deserve this the first time around, and he certainly is not, not deserving of it this time around, that when this project gets built, we still have the same problem that we just had, and that, that, that's just not right.
So you're, you're basically talking about construction protection?
Yeah.
So of retaining walls or something to keep that from falling back?
And, and just making sure that we, yeah, we put those, you know, those one, two, three, four, five stalls there with their cover at the right location. I just don't want to push them so far to the top, you know, further up on that drawing and impact that, that neighbor once again. Again, it's a detail, but it's an important one, because we've already, we've already created a problem once before, and it's, it's unacceptable that we would go through this and create the same problem for that neighbor again.
I guess if I could come back to condition number 10, and what we had proposed was that if the First Street right-of-way is vacated, the applicant shall maintain a five-foot separate, five-foot setback from the property line, and the fence be set back from the property line to allow additional landscaping to be planted on the north side of the fence, to provide visual screening of the fence in the rear of the covered parking structure from the property located to the north of the site. If it's not vacated, we're recommending the adjustment to zero. So I guess the question is, you know, if, if First, if First Street is vacated?
Yeah.
Is a five-foot setback sufficient? And then the second question is, does additional language need to be added to, to that condition to address your concern?
Yeah, I, I guess I just don't know what the answer is, I just want to make sure it doesn't happen.
Are you talking about mitigating the rockfall from that potential location?
Yes, yes, I just want to make sure that we're not going over that edge again by this, by this plan right here.
And perhaps we could add some language about mitigating rockfall on condition 10?
That the fence be suitable to mitigate rockfall?
I think it might be, could be a device different from the fence, though.
Well, the, we, whatever term you want to use. And, and I guess you've got to remember, when we've, if, if First, if First Street is vacated, half of it would come back to the, half goes to each parcel. So the north half of First Street would become the property of the property owner to the north, the southern half would become the property of the city for development purposes, and so we're proposing a five-foot setback. So you'd only have, you know, if, that, that property starts to slant, to, to slope down, and at that point, it would be on someone else's property, so to have the city go onto their property to put, let's say, screening over rock, there's going to have to be some cooperation there amongst property owners. So, I'm, and, and I don't disagree that it is a concern, I'm just trying to formulate how we're going to monitor this and address it, and what remedy is going to be appropriate.
Maybe it's as simple as some language that says that the concern be discussed with the neighbor.
I think once it's all surveyed and people under, you know, once you get into the process and it's surveyed and we understand where the grade changed, where the existing house is, I think it'll kind of all work itself out. I just want language in there to, that that needs to be part of the process, the next part of the process, so that that doesn't happen again.
Okay. Well, I guess my thought is, I mean, it does say that with fence, I'm getting, you know, that's the question is, is, fence is the definitive answer here, is, you know, fence could necessarily, not necessarily mean fence. Fence could, it's in here, fence could mean rock, rockfall, fence could mean whatever the design comes up with. So I think the language is there, it's just a matter of how it's interpreted at the design guidelines discussions, right? I mean, it says fence. Right, and then, and that was, that was going to be a security fence. So I think what I'm kind of hearing is probably some way to mitigate potential rockfall?
Yeah.
Which, you know, is that, you know, netting, for example, that we have along 99E on the rock face, you know, so I'm not sure that I, that I have a...
Is that what you're, are you thinking that, or are you just thinking that you, just so that we're not creating more of a problem?
That's simply it. That in a nutshell, I just don't want to have the same thing happen again, and you can't tell from the drawing if, if this actually does work. I, I just don't know if it works, I just want to make sure it works at that one property.
Can you not say, put in that, in that, in number 10, rockfall mitigation if necessary? I mean, is that, is that too, not enough? Not specific enough? How about we put a note by it?
Okay.
And we're going to noodle on it while you guys keep talking?
Go doodle away.
Doodle away.
On your...
Otherwise, atom all.
What do you guys think about this? Well, I was just wondering on demolition versus decomposition.
Deconstruction.
I'm sorry, de, yeah.
That's the next phase.
Fence's a little slower than the other.
Anyway, decon, deconstruction here is in nine, are you, are you suggesting just putting in an eight as well?
It's, okay, we'll get to it.
Eight, they say prior to demolition, the city will provide, et cetera.
I guess what I was, I was kind of hearing was that throughout the master plan, you wanted the demolition changed to the term deconstruction?
All the way through. That's the responsible thing to do. There's all these materials that can be taken down in a more deliberate manner, some reused, some goes to the, the junkyard, some of it gets reused in other buildings, but that's the way we need to do these kinds of projects. So simply, it's, you know, it's deconstruct as opposed to demolish, and they, they mean two totally different things in the world of sustainability.
So, so I guess what I'm hearing is a proposal that all buildings shall be deconstructed?
Yes.
Rather than pursue deconstruction? In number nine, the city shall...
You're looking at eight and nine?
Yeah, city shall pursue deconstruction and use of it. Just cross off pursue then, is all you're saying? Shall deconstruct?
Well, but, does that tie, can they deconstruct every, every building? Are there instances where they would have to demolish? And if we say shall deconstruct and they can't do it, what happens then? For, I mean, I don't know what the example of that would be, I, I don't know what...
Neither do I. I think they can all be deconstructed.
And that I don't know, that's...
And some of these outbuildings along the top, they could certainly be dismantled, as opposed to bulldoze down and...
Sure, sure.
And haul away.
And I guess, are you concerned about the deconstruction of the exterior of the building?
The entire thing.
Okay.
Could we not just say the city will deconstruct and reuse building materials from all outbuildings to the extent practical?
Done.
There you go.
Any other comments? I got a question, if not. Couple, Tony, can you, can you shed some light on the protection of the green space? What, what, what length of flexibility do we have there? Or what flexibility will there be at, at the staff level?
So, we're talking about the open space outcropping in the northeast corner of the site, just east of the stormwater detention con...
Correct.
You know, I think what we can do is, is describe it as such, as that location, and say that it shall be constructed as proposed in the master plan, this area shall not be used for other uses?
Yeah.
Unless brought back as a type-three review in front of the planning commission.
Yeah, I guess I just don't know how much latitude the city has. When it's all said and done, you know, this is a master plan, so things could get moved around, but what I don't want to see is, you know, the five feet from there, this all gets wiped out, there's all these buildings in here, and there really isn't any visual barrier here. That, that's what I'm getting at. Right now, it performs really, really well, it really does create this for the neighborhood and, and keeps it backing out of the way and unobtrusive.
I, I would support what you said, Tony, that's a good idea, write it in there, write this, write it in the plan. The second question I have is citizen involvement in stormwater detention in that, in that project. I mean, we're, because the citizens, the neighbors are within 300 feet, I mean, wouldn't they be, when it got to design development, wouldn't they be involved in that discussion anyway?
Yeah, and, and so that would be the question, yeah, and if that is, that, if that's what happens here, Tony, then I'm good with that. And if that is, if that's what happens here, Tony, then I'm good with that, that that would be, you know, it's unfortunate that it would just go straight to design and then it would get presented as opposed to having a neighborhood kind of charrette, you might say, about what we might want to see there, what the citizens would want to see there as opposed to the city kind of guessing at how it might work.
Okay.
Because it's an incredible opportunity right here for the neighborhood, but as well as a showpiece for this entire project. It's just that a neat location that could really be something very special, and the citizen involvement, I think, is important, however that happens. So, maybe you're right. Just through the process, it automatically does that.
Well, and I guess, let me lay out how our typical process would work on a storm pond. You'd come in and you'd, what we'd get, you know, what we're really trying to address are the water quality and water quantity released from the site. Make sure that we adequately address that, that the storm ponds appropriately sized. You can prove that you can fit it on your site, and you can meet our standards for water quality, water quantity. And then what happens is, you know, because these are preliminary plans, you usually don't have a landscape architect come down, down to the exact number of plantings. What we have is a stormwater design manual, and it dictates how many shrubs, trees are located based on a square footage of the, you know, trap, stormwater trap. So, in that sense, it's very, it's dictated to you by the stormwater manual. So, what I'm hearing is that you want it to serve more of a function than just stormwater in terms of its public interaction, which if that is something that you're looking for, I would recommend probably a condition to require some type of a review with detailed plans for that.
Yeah, and I am, because you're right. Our stormwater management does, and it will end up giving sort of pragmatic information about what happens there. But that's not, and great, got it. What I'm more interested in is now let's take that and make something aesthetically beautiful out of it, because there's absolutely no reason why we can't and why we shouldn't. So, it's kind of taking it to the next level as opposed to, we need 12 of these plants and six of these and four rocks, that'll do it, and just place them and call it a day. It seems underthought.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Leswi's idea here. We've got so many of these detention ponds around the city, and the first thing you see is the fence. And I'd really like, if we want to make this a showcase or a showpiece for stormwater detention, how low can that fence go? How close to that water can it go? Can that fence go way? And if the people that work with the city to help come up with requirements for that detention facility determine that it's safe enough for them not to have a fence around that stormwater detention pond, that might be a good model for the city someday. So, I would support a condition of approval to engage the neighborhood association in a process to create a showpiece for the stormwater detention facility at the site adjacent to the Waterwood Park.
Next question I had, the point is, I think, when you, Dan, you talked about capacity. I think that's addressed. I think Tony addressed that, that 10%, they have to come back.
Yeah.
So, 10% of what we're looking at here is pretty minimal, I think.
Yeah, I think so, too. I think so, too. I just didn't want it to run its own course, and 20 years from now, we look and those things doubled and tripled, and what happened here? That's not fully approved. So, I just didn't know what the mechanism was for saying that this project has now reached its capacity.
And then, I have a question about LEED certification. You know, I guess forcing the... I appreciate that we want to be LEED silver, and I think we should be. We should make this an enviable product from the citizens around and all the other jurisdictions. I just don't, I don't know what the cost would be associated with that and if it's even feasible. And I guess I'd be interested to have more study on that, and I think we should. I'm not sure I want to... I think what I would do if I did a, if I put that in as a...
Condition?
A condition, I want it to be review the, I'm not sure the terminology.
Cost benefit analysis of...
Cost benefit analysis of value. That's a little too much. I don't know how to say it. I don't want to force the issue, because at some point, I mean, you've got garage. I mean, how much LEED silver can you do with a garage? On the main building, I think you'd do a lot.
That's what I'm actually talking about. I'm not talking about the upper platform buildings at all. I'm talking about the main public works.
Okay.
Actually, the lower site, which could all be a LEED silver.
That I'm more comfortable with.
Yeah, that's the lower part, that entire section down there, which is more the public face of this project. I see no reason why the city wouldn't support a policy that would advocate that. Other jurisdictions most definitely now have a policy in place where all their public buildings are LEED certified of some sort. We're not quite there yet, and I'm trying to push it that way, but how do we do it? This is an important project for our city.
It is the case that the county's master plan required LEED certification, or did they spell out in the county's master plan that they were LEED certified?
LEED certified, but I don't think it was specific to a color or a position.
Level.
Level, thank you. I think, I have no problem with saying LEED, the public, the main level, public building, the four-story building, whatever, should be LEED certified.
And I guess I wouldn't have any problem with that if we ended up backing into that position, because it says, it says the intention of the design is going to be sustainable, meet a minimum of LEED silver, which is up on the rung a little bit. So, you know, and I would be comfortable if we ended up just getting LEED certified, which is at the first threshold of sustainability. I'd even be comfortable with that, but we, you know, the city really needs to take a position where our public buildings are responsible, period.
Sure, I agree.
And somehow, we need to get that in, even if it's just the minimum standard now before a policy gets put into place. I think for us to advocate for that is heading in the right direction.
I think we should.
I don't know if we can do it, but...
I think we should. I was just concerned about the upper portion and...
Yeah, I'm not talking about the upper portion.
Okay, well, that makes me more comfortable. I would be willing to support that, Tony.
I guess, just can I clarify? Are we looking for the, something like the office building on the lower site shall meet a minimum LEED certification or LEED silver?
Well, again, I'd rather LEED silver. I'm pushing for LEED silver. I'll settle for LEED certification, whatever the planning commission is.
And then, the second part of that question is, you want the buildings to go through the LEED process and be certified or demonstrate that it could be certified?
Well...
That it's designed to all the standards to be certified, but not going through that extra step of the certification process?
Let me ask you a question first before I answer. Can we, can we actually say that it has to be LEED certified? I mean, do we have that amount of latitude, City Attorney? Or we don't have that amount of latitude? I'm pushing here.
Well, I think that you have to go back to your criteria, and your criteria talking about mitigating impacts.
Mm-hmm.
And I think if you can link LEED review to mitigating impacts and interpret the criteria to include those, I'm not sure that you don't get it... Tony's recommendation, he said you either get LEED certified or you meet the LEED criteria. I'm not sure that there's a difference there in terms of what you end, the end result.
There potentially is a huge difference. I'm in that field, so I do know that the intent of LEED and actually doing LEED are two different things, and there is a cost implication. There is a cost implication.
And to be honest, that's my concern, is just that added cost of going through the certification process, but that's something, you know, that you, as commissioners, need to weigh in your recommendation.
Well, what can we do?
Yeah, that's exactly it.
Well, but I think the question is, you know, this is a policy decision that you all need to make based on your interpretation of the criteria.
So, you have the interpretation of the approval criteria, you know, is this necessary to meet one of those approval criteria? To, is it considered mitigation for an adjustment? Is it considered mitigation to meet one of those approval criteria? And then, the other thing is, you're interpreting the applicant's proposal to meet the intent of, their intention to meet LEED silver, and you need to interpret what does intent mean? You know, what is going to make you comfortable in terms of accepting that as proposed by the applicant?
Well, it's certainly a mitigation for the adjustments to the development standards that are, the five development standards that we're talking about. So, it's certainly mitigation. And so, I think that we're at the point of asking for a condition of approval that is minimum LEED silver certification is what I would suggest.
How do you feel about that?
Well, I guess I'm still, the question is still, can, do you feel that we could adequately tie that condition to, that mitigating circumstance with criteria definitively?
Why would you not? Why would you not do that?
I just want to make sure that counsel, because they looked a little squishy on that, that they were okay, but I'm fine. I have absolutely no problem with putting that language in there personally.
Well, I think, you know, I think it's going to be a question from this Public Works Department's perspective of cost.
I understand that.
And I don't know what the cost would be.
See, I don't have a problem with LEED certification. I have more of a problem with LEED silver certification, only because the cost implication, we're talking about a considerable cost here. And I think if we can, we're showing intent, and that intent is to be LEED certified, that intent is to be sustainable, that intent, that we're showing. And I think if we say that and say that it needs to be at a minimum, I know what you want, but I think, you know, I feel more comfortable saying minimum LEED certification.
I'm okay with that. You guys?
Yeah, and I am, too.
I guess I prefer that.
I'm not voting, okay. So, just LEED certification is the way it's going now. The minimum LEED certification.
The way you address it, Tony, I think is fine. And the last thing that I have is moving the fuel station.
Yeah.
Your recommendation would just be to move it out of the public right of way, or public view?
Yeah, move it out of the public way. There's several locations I can see for it. I don't know why it's there necessarily, but there seems to be a lot of latitude in where this could go. It's, of all the structures up there, of everything that's going to be happening, that's the biggest eyesore, and yet, it's right at the front door, so, you know.
How do we condition that? Well, that's the question. How do you condition that? I mean, you could say something like the fuel station will be moved to a site not visible?
Yeah, from...
From the South John Adams Street access point?
Yeah.
And in terms of not vis... Is it the pump station that, or is it the actual pump? Or let's say they put a wall up with landscaping on the other side of it? Is that, it's a fuel station wall, but your concern is the actual fuel pump?
Yeah, the fuel pump, just everything that happens behind that is just sort of an ugly sort of eyesore. Actually, the wall actually would do it for me, but right now, it's just shown as landscaping. So, and that's not going to be enough of a buffer for me, considering that we have the rest of the site to locate this.
So, the concern is the fuel pumps. So, let's just say you're looking at this map, and let's just say they put a wall on that east side, right there?
Right.
And they put the fuel pumps on the east side instead of the west side. You can't see the fuel pump from the street. Is that sufficient?
Yes.
From the John Adams, right?
Yeah, so you can't see it, you know?
Would that be sufficient for you, Dan?
Yeah.
So, we're talking redesign or relocate so that views from John Adams are obscured to the fuel pumps?
Yeah, you know, whether it gets relocated to a different spot or it stays there and it has a wall, I'm good with either of those. And again, the devil's in the details when it comes to these kinds of things. This is, it's great to look at this sort of globally, but I think that the plan just, in my eyes, with these additional conditions, just needed a little extra behind it.
And then, I had the access, and we kind of explained that it's currently owned by the state. Did that address your concern, or do you want to attach a condition?
I thought we were going to attach a condition that says if and when the city...
Oh, there is support for that?
Yeah, I thought so. Did you not?
Are we talking about this area?
Yeah.
Yeah, either way, either it's a, either there's an access agreement or the property line actually physically gets moved, but that's...
Once the city takes ownership.
Once the city owns the property. Either of those mechanisms, because the point is, is that, you know, the way it's shown right now, there's the potential, how would you walk there if that is...
Cut off.
Yeah. If it's not there, you can't.
And perpetuity, I think, was the discussion, right?
Dan, can you go over the hilltop views before expanding how we...
Oh, you talked about hilltop views.
Oh, that was me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I was going to do that. And I don't know really how to condition that. I guess my thought is, you know, with, if there is a, if we can utilize that property at the hilltop...
The reservoirs.
The reservoir area. If we utilize that storage efficiently, we should use that 100% to, it's 100%, be efficient with it to 100% before we, you know, before we add more down here. Yeah, I'm not sure how to say that. I just want to make sure we're utilizing the other resources we have before we add on down here and add more vehicles and things like that. Don't know how to say that.
Would you be okay with a recommendation to do that? Or do you want a certain number of vehicles stored?
No, I'm fine with the recommendation. I'm just thinking that we would, that we'd look at that, we'd look at that to be fully utilized prior to even, I don't want to say, don't do phase four until that's fully utilized. I don't want to say that, because I want to have them, I'm not going to micromanage public works, but I do want, I do want that to be utilized efficiently before we...
Could, I guess, one concern, and I don't exactly remember how many phases were in the Mountain View Reservoir Master Plan, you know, my concern would be, Mountain View Master Plan needs to be completely implemented before, you know, this site is able to move forward, and it doesn't sound like that's where you're going.
No, I don't want to go there. I want to say, you know, recommendation for, is what I'd prefer.
For utilization of space at the Mountain View location...
Yeah.
Is considered when...
And I guess, we can certainly write any condition that you need. You know, if we say something like, we encourage you to do this, is it more of a policy note than a, you know, I'm not sure, you know, it should be part of the finding, the statement of the planning commission that says, you know, we want you to utilize all available opportunities? I'm just not sure how we would condition it, what threshold we would set.
Yeah, I guess my concern is, excuse me one second.
No, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that I think what I don't want to see is moving vehicles from the hilltop down to the site just for storage when there's more storage up there, is what I'm saying. Yeah, utilize both properties, but utilize that property just. And again, that's, maybe that's micromanaging, maybe that's, I should stay with that completely. I just, that's a concern of mine. If we can minimize traffic in the neighborhood and minimize access and all those things, even if it is going to be during a certain period of the day, I'm all for minimization. And how we do that, I don't know. Maybe just saying it in public here will do it, but that's one thing.
Yeah, I would, I would like to say, by saying it here in public, that is the best way to do it. It seems like to try to tie up the applicant with this type of recommendation would really be, you know, I understand the intent, but it just doesn't seem...
Well, can we not tie, not a recommendation that doesn't have the same level as a condition? I mean, it just, like a budget note, as they do in the legislative...
Well, you could put it in the findings. You could write it into the findings of the decision, and then it would be part of the decision. It just wouldn't be a condition of approval.
Right, and I'm okay with it. That's a good one.
I think that would be my...
Yeah, that's, I'm good with that. The other one was verification of the site boundary. Did you come up with any language for that? I know we talked about that first thing. I think it's important. Did we address that?
Well, I think what we can do is we can have, the applicant shall make all reasonable attempts... attempts to locate the south, south boundary, consistent with the language set out in the charter, and make a lot line adjustment as appropriate to comply. Will that work?
Mm-hmm.
And then the last file that I have, tell me if I'm wrong, but interpretive signage.
Yeah.
That we'd like to have is a-
Right. And I had from Commissioner Stein, and it sounded like the, when I was jotting this down, the interpretive sites dealing with, it sounded like you were talking geology aside, but it sounded like it may have grown from that a little.
The June 22nd letter from Mr. Harmon, we looked at it at the June 22nd hearing date, it was Exhibit B, if we could refer to that when we talk to the, when we talk about the interpretive signage. And there were two parts to it that I wanted to point out, and the first part having to do with the basalt flows, cooling effects, colonades, brick bat, and block joining basalt's landslide, deformation and creep, wildlife and vegetation that have uniquely established themselves in this armory, waterboard park area. And the second part, and I don't, I see it myself as a separate interpretive history. He talks in the last two paragraphs about his father and his relationship to the armory, and to actually call out the early leaders from the Armory's Company D. And my thought was that should there be a lobby in this new structure that the public could go into, there might be an interpretive historical display that would call out what was here at this site in the past.
Okay, so we have the, the history of the Company D leaders and Company D in general in the lobby of the building, and then we also have interpretive signs dealing with the geology, landslide, vegetation, and wildlife that would be located more towards the pedestrian paths connecting to Waterboard Park?
The park path, right.
Okay.
Any others that we may have missed on the way? I think we got most of them. Okay.
Read them all? Do you want to take a second? If we could maybe have a, just a, oh, you know which one we needed to come back on was the rockfall mitigation language on that north property line. So maybe we could take a five-minute break, and let us try and write these up a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
A little more clear, and then we can kind of read them into the record for your consideration.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay, so at this time, we'll take a five-minute break, and see you then.
Okay. Property containing or adjacent to First Street. Or containing the land subject to the First Street vacation.
What, whatever your issue was.
Those are all good questions. What, did you get any responses?
Oh, so deconstruct, it's condition nine. Just, just deconstructing.
Then, oh, it's an able-bodied association and entity of the city? Well. They don't know? Well, the bug stops at City Council if you don't get a clear answer. You know, and even a conversation, a conversation with the mayor as well, as the executive team in the interim between decisions to carry forward, although any of them to carry forward that is subject to the council. I'd take it from a mayor person because her and the city manager are supposed to be together. But it ultimately absolutely could be posed as a question to the city council, and it might be one that's ambiguous, that they don't, aren't answering that because, and my guess is it's not explicit it, because when you said that, it made me wonder too, what does it say in code in terms of a neighborhood association's level of entity around?
They're talking about the aesthetics of the building, to create a transition appropriate.
If there even are that, I mean, maybe it's written such that they, I don't know, I don't know, without looking at the, like, I write contracts for a living, so I know how specific teeny little words, and just because they're recognized doesn't mean they're a part of for the full rights, and, you know, I mean, there, there are different non-governmental agreements, I mean.
I think it's an education.
Absolutely. My guess would be that that's the case, but unless explicitly stated, right? Who knows? Yep. Sir, she's been pretty coach.
I was going to ask you how that's working now.
It's been pretty good.
I see why you can, it is.
Well, what are you doing? You can work five, six hours if they cut it or if they're done. Well, yeah, I mean, I, I, while I didn't, they wouldn't let me drive because I'm still like learning those skills. I had that spinal cord injury, and I, they want to be real careful with how, I've already kind of stepped on my teeth last. Yeah, and I had to actually argue with the doctor, he wrote up to 35 hours as part-time, and he goes, 35? I go, I don't understand my job. Because, you know, we got weekend conferences and things like that, that is-
This is a 90-hour.
It is.
30 hours.
Yeah. That is literally part-time for my job. But I also got to write my discretion for me, so I can make that call.
I'm not going into this.
And I have, I've had, I've had days I couldn't get out of bed, and just you get setbacks, it's just how it works. But, yeah, actually, a couple Mondays ago, when we had one scheduled that got canceled, I wouldn't have made it, not what I remember.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
How are we doing?
We're ready. I think we're ready.
All right, welcome back.
Thank you. A short break. Okay, at this time, I think we'd like to hear these, the changed and additional conditions of approval.
Okay, so for the first one, the applicant shall work with the property owners adjacent to the proposed First Street Vacation to address rockfall mitigation as necessary? And if you have concerns, as I'm reading these, please do jump in.
Are you going to number, name these or number these as we go through them, or?
We'll call this, for, since the numbering's all, we'll just call it A, and then we'll add it in, in the final version. The applicant shall work with the property owners adjacent to the proposed First Street Vacation to address rockfall mitigation as necessary. B, the applicant shall protect the open space depicted in the northeast corner of the upper site west of the detention pond. Encroachment into the open space as depicted on the master plan shall require a type three We have an existing condition of approval number nine, and we're going to change that to say that the city shall deconstruct and reuse building materials from all the outbuildings to the extent practical, and then leave the remainder of condition nine the same. Condition C, the applicant shall engage the neighbors in an attempt to create a detention pond on the upper site that serves as an aesthetic amenity and educational opportunity for the neighborhood. The office building on the lower site shall achieve a minimum lead certification?
That was D, right?
Correct, sorry, that was D.
Okay.
E, the applicant shall relocate or redesign the fuel station on the upper site. The relocation or redesign shall ensure that the fuel pumps are not visible from South John Adams. F, once, once the city takes ownership of the Armory property, they shall either record a lot line adjustment or an easement for the benefit of public access into Waterboard Park.
In perpetuity?
The applicant shall construct educational signs along the park paths into Waterboard Park depicting the geology, history, wildlife, and vegetation of the area. That was G. H, the applicant shall include a history of Company D and its leadership and history on the site. This signage shall be included in the lobby of the proposed office building.
Condition I, the applicant shall make all reasonable attempts to locate the south border bound, or, sorry, the southern boundary as consistent with the description contained in the city charter, a lot line adjustment may be required to facilitate this result. And then we propose altering the findings to encourage utilization of the Mountain View Reservoir Complex before use of the subject site for existing vehicle storage.
Very good.
Can you read the last one?
Encourage utilization of the Mountain View Reservoir Complex before use of the subject site for existing vehicle storage.
And actually, there was one more. It's one, is one I was talking about, this area right here. Right now, the fence is located here, there's the gate, and the fence runs along here. And what I was saying also, in addition to keeping this area, is moving the fence back to here, to this area here, and crossing over. That way, we don't have this ugly fence in front of this wonderful landscape barrier, which is already achieving what we need to do, so.
Commission supportive?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I actually thought that was a part of what we were talking about.
So J, we'll add that the fencing located in the open space in the northeast corner of the upper site shall be located along the westerly edge of the open space.
Yeah. That sounds right. Yeah.
Or we might merge that one in with the other one that requires it to be an open space.
Yeah, okay.
So move J in with B.
Can you read the finding once again?
Encourage utilization of the Mountain View Reservoir Complex before use of the subject site for existing vehicle storage.
I guess I'd go with that as far as efficiency. If it's more efficient to bring these vehicles down or store some vehicles there for access, I think we're kind of tying Public Works up by putting that sort of finding in there. And maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're suggesting.
No, I think that says exactly what I had in mind, is, is I would, I'm interested, clearly, this, this is a project that makes sense. My concern is that we don't unload everything from up there and have a big empty lot when we have plenty of space, and bring it down into the neighborhood where, where there's a concern about traffic.
Sure, I understand that, but if there's an efficiency by having it there, and I don't want to define that, but I mean, if, if there's some reason to have that equipment there as opposed to having up and down.
Sure.
I guess if we can work efficiency in there, I'd be a little happy with that finding.
And I guess I was thinking, initially, I was thinking maxim, to use the term something to the extent of maximize utilization, but then backed off on that because of what you were thinking would hamper, with the, I, with the term just utilization, I would think is loose enough to give them the discretion to be able to do that tied with the maximum of the 10% increase in the traffic that they're also tied to. They can't move too many things down there just by those, that other limitation as well.
And I guess, I'm sorry, you know, when we proposed that finding, you know, I think part of the plan, though, is to move some existing vehicle, I mean, there is going to be some shuffling going on.
Sure.
So I guess I should probably retract that part a little bit.
I'm, my concern is, and I'll say it again, my concern is I just don't want to see that lot empty out and come down into the neighborhood. You know, regardless of whether they're going to be used or not, I just, I think that, I mean, again, I don't want to tie the hands of Public Works either. I mean, I clearly don't want to micromanage it, I just want to make sure that, we all heard that there's a concern about traffic. We all know that, you know, less traffic is better, and if we can utilize that space more efficiently up there at the hilltop where there is less concern about traffic and more open space, then we should do that.
And what if we put in language to the extent of shall be considered, utilization of that shall be, and maybe that gives them a little more leeway, I don't know.
Well, you threw the word in efficiency, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
That's more what I'm after, is if it's more-
Efficient.
Efficient to have that vehicle down there, and I, that's why I was saying, just saying it here in our meeting, I think is enough, but if we're going to put it in the finding, then I'd throw the word efficiency in there, just, however, however it was worded.
If we fit efficiency in that sentence.
How about, how about, encourage efficient use of the site as well as utilization of the Mountain View Reservoir Complex? Um, no, take that out. Encourage utilization of the Mountain View Reservoir Complex. Efficiently.
Efficient.
Before use of the subject site for existing vehicle storage. You don't want that last part?
Well, because we are gonna be, you know, some vehicles are gonna need to be moved in order for this plan to work.
Right, right, sure.
You know, and I don't want to have to tag ABC truck to see if ABC moved from up top to bottom.
Nor, nor do I. I, I don't want to make this harder than it's already becoming. I, I really, all I'm saying, you understand what I'm trying to.
Encourage utilization of the Mountain View Reservoir Complex site efficiently.
Or efficient utilization of it.
However.
Yeah. The point's been made, that's all I wanted to get, so that's perfect. That'll work for me.
Me too.
So are we adding a finding, or are we just letting it?
No, I, I would like it as a finding.
Yeah.
I just, and, and how it was just presented is fine with me. I guess I should have been more clear.
All right. What would be the commission's pleasure? Would you like us to read them again? We are at A through I with an amendment to nine plus a new finding.
I don't think, do you, uh, need, uh, reread?
I'm good.
I'm good with that needs. So at this time, it looks like we, uh, could use a motion.
I, I move to, uh, I move, I, I, how do you say it? I move to approve CP oh, zero-nine dash zero-one, the concept master plan for the Public Works Center, uh, with, uh, conditions of approval as stated.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Lejois, motion, Commissioner Groner, second. Tony, would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Groner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye. Well, thank you very much, once again, for all the involvement, community, we appreciate it, and, uh, very good job by the applicant. Okay, do we need a break before we move on to the next one?
It's, it's your.
You.
Do you need, yep, can I have anything to set up, or?
Let's roll.
All right, well, then we'll move, we'll move as well. Yeah. Okay. Let's move on to, uh, our second hearing this evening, PZ zero-nine dash zero-one, ZC zero-nine dash zero-one, and TP zero-nine dash zero-one. At this time, I'd like to read our information into the record. Uh, staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report, along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for this application. The qualified judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law in the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the chart to my left. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be entered into the record. Before the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria, and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit, um, written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the planning commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond that the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised statutes one-ninety-seven dash seven-ninety-six requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed condition of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in circuit courts. At this time, I'll ask if any commissioners have any extraparte contact, conflict of interest, bias, or other statements to declare.
I've visited the site.
I too have visited the site.
Have I?
Okay. Any questions, Commissioner? I see none, so we'll move on. And we'll turn this over to staff.
Okay, thank you, Chairperson Paul, commissioners. Uh, so the applicant is requesting approval of a comprehensive plan amendment from low-density residential to high-density residential, and a zone change from R-ten to R-two for an approximately two-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-nine square-foot piece of a larger eight-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-seven square-foot property that split-zoned R-ten and R-two. In addition, the applicant is requesting approval of a four-lot subdivision. Uh, the location map on the screen, uh, the subject site is right here at the north end of this bulb, which is currently located in the Caulfield Place subdivision, which has been recorded and a majority of it constructed. Uh, streets are in sidewalks, are in storm pond utilities. Uh, the access to the site, the main access off of two-thirteen is at the, at the light at Caulfield, uh, where they, where that intersects. Um, what I've included here on this site plan is the actual Caulfield Place plat, uh, which does show the lotting pattern. Uh, this tract right here is where the proposed, uh, comprehensive plan amendments, zone change and subdivision are proposed. The... When this application went through the land use process for a ninety-four-lot subdivision, uh, there was, during the preliminary, uh, review, uh, it was determined that there may be a need for a pump station, sanitary sewer pump station. Once we got to final design of the engineering plans, we discovered that and worked with the applicant, and instead of building a brand-new pump station, we were able to, uh, improve, provide access across the creek, and there's an existing pump station on the north side of the creek right there by the apartments. So we were able to, um, get the utility to the north, do some work on that pump station, improve that one, uh, to, uh, address the sanitary sewer requirements for this area. Since this lot was not needed for a pump station anymore, uh, the applicant worked with the city, uh, and, and this tract, uh, to the north along the north property line is a, uh, is a stormwater tract. Uh, it was leftover remnant pieces, it was zoned R-ten. Uh, the applicant worked with the Public Works Department, uh, did a lotline adjustment and purchased some additional property, um, in order to, um, in order to, uh, move this, this application forward. Uh, as a result, we've ended up with a property that's, uh, has a split comprehensive plan designation and a split zoning designation. Uh, once again, the southern part of this site, um, is, is already zoned R-two and has a comprehensive plan designation of high density. This northern section of the property, which like, as I stated, is approximately twenty-six-hundred square feet, uh, would need the comprehensive plan designation and the zone change. With the Caulfield Place subdivision being built, I was just, uh, construction was recently completed. All the streets have been designed to local street standards, all the utilities have been put in place, water, sanitary sewers, stormwater. There's adequate, uh, capacity in the detention pond to, to accommodate the additional four lots. Based on the four lots that, we, we utilized the previously submitted transportation impact analysis, um, and the applicant, when they actually constructed the Caulfield Place subdivision, um, built out approximately fifteen homes less than the maximum density allowed under the R-two zone. So even with these four additional homes, you're still approximately eleven homes under the maximum density allowed on the site. The, we relied on the transportation review, which found that at, um, completion and build-out, um, all the intersections in the study area would meet our level of service standards. Uh, these four additional homes will not cause those level of service standards to degrade to a failing level. As part of the approval process for the comprehensive plan amendment and zone change, the, um, the applicant must demonstrate that, uh, meets the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we've laid out some of the goals that we felt were applicable, including citizen involvement, um, land use, ensuring that the uses, it's used efficiently, um, the proposal for, um, land use pre- patterns that reduce the need and for distance by, uh, single occupancy vehicles. As part of the Caulfield, um, Place original plat, um, we worked with the applicant in identifying the appropriate location for a, a pathway that would can, uh, could go east to west across the site. And it's on our, the path is identified on the Oregon City Trails Master Plan. We worked with the applicant to, um, secure an easement on the south si- south side of Two's Pond. On the south side of Two's Pond, then it would continue through the BPA easements, eventually connecting, uh, to the east to two-thirteen, which would get you access to the sidewalks on two-thirteen, as well as the Clackamas Community College, which has recreational, educational, and mass transit opportunities. And then, um, you know, as the city develops, you know, some type of a continuation to the west tying into a county, um, Trails Master Plan in, in that area. So we have secured those easements, uh, it's just a matter of constructing them at, at a later date. As we discussed, all the public facilities are in place. The applicant will play Parks SDCs, uh, we're part of the fire district now, um, and then police, um, this, this continually comes up, our police services. Um, I think it's important to note that we don't have a standard, uh, that says X officers per thousand of population. We utilize the city commission in making those staffing decisions for what our police force should be, uh, in the city. We also believe this is an appropriate use. Surrounding zoning and uses are all R-two. Uh, it's compatible with the proposed uses around. It's gonna be a, um, four-unit, uh, single-family attached complex, exactly similar to what's being constructed and proposed for the remainder of the Caulfield Place subdivision. Um, we also utilized the water resource report that was done for the Caulfield Place subdivision. Uh, the applicant went through our water quality resource area overlay district, uh, complied, provide mitigation and appropriate buffers. They've, um, proposed the exact same buffers that we acknowledged and approved as part of this application, so we did not require them to submit again, just demonstrate that they were meeting, uh, what was originally approved, which they have. Uh, we have attached, recommended, uh, seven conditions of approval, um, very standard conditions, just addressing connections to the existing utilities, um, ensure that any public improvements that are made are in compliance with our engineering standards, um, and making sure that, uh, we have some, uh, public utility easements that were recorded as part of the Caulfield plat, just plat, just to ensure that those are reflected on the construction plans and incorporated into, uh, the Caulfield Place number-two plat. Um, with that, I will conclude my staff report and ask if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I just have a question. How, how come, why, why does this need to be rezoned?
We try to avoid split zones in the city. It, it, it raises questions of which standard are you gonna apply to the property? If it's zoned R-ten and R-two, do you apply the stricter R-ten? Or do you apply the R-two because it has a majority? So we directed the applicant to clean this up at, at a pre-up and recommended that they come in and, uh, and get the entire property zoned R-two.
So, so the assumption is, is that the, uh, townhouses then straddle this, this line? Is that true?
No.
Or not necessarily even that?
No, when, when the plat's recorded, all those lotlines, the existing lotlines will be cleaned up, and, and you will just have, uh, when the plat's recorded, you, it will, it will resemble, um...
The hatched area.
Correct. Well, the hatched area will be, um, rezoned to R-two, and the comp plan will be changed to high-density residential, and then you've got this lotline.
Mm-hmm.
So that, when the plat's recorded, this will become one lot.
Right.
This will become a second lot. So, these...
But in and of itself, is, is having the two zones on that, on those properties creating a complication? I, I just don't know.
Yes, it is. From a policy standpoint for the city, it is.
So just from a policy, but not from a constructibility or set, it doesn't create a setback for, for which they can't use the property efficiently? Or is that not it even, either? Is it just a cleanup thing?
It's, it's, it's a cleanup thing, and it's, what, which standard do we apply? And...
But if you were building on the R-two part, on the southern part, and you're not even on the R-ten part, would it matter? It wouldn't matter, right? Okay.
Effectively, it'd have just one, less property to build.
Right, it would, it would limit the available property. And once again, it goes, it goes back to which standard do we use? You've got an R-two piece that now needs to meet R-ten setbacks and the rear, because that's, that property's zoned partially R-ten.
Yeah.
It really is.
I thought you would just apply whatever rules to each one you would have. In other words, if there's a five-foot setback in R-two, side yard setback, we'll say, but in R-ten, there was a, a different one, wouldn't the line just kind of do a?
Well, you wouldn't be able to do attached housing on any of the R-ten piece of the property because attached housing aren't allowed in R-ten. So you'd have attached housing on the front part.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, so the housing does probably straddle over. In other words, the whole thing, the housing itself is anticipated to be straddling this. Otherwise, if it were on the south part, if that, let's say the townhouse was just on the south part, you would, we wouldn't need to do this, would we? Maybe this, maybe the rear yard setback would. Would the applicant?
Well, well, to be honest with you, it's, it's a, it's a policy called by the city on how, how do we implement split-zone properties? Is it a majority rules? Is it the use of where the building is located? Um, it's just, it really complicates this piece, you know, for the future owner. You know, what, what are we owning? What are we allowed to do here?
Right.
Um...
What can we build?
What can we build? Why is it split-zoned? What, you know, it, um, so yes, part of it's cleanup, part of it is, you know, just clarification of what's allowed on the site. Um, and then the third part is, um, from a policy standpoint, it's, it's, it's just very difficult to respond to split-zone properties and what's allowed where on that property.
So, Mr. Chair, don't mind. I don't remember, and maybe I'm wrong, but remember some, this similar situation coming in front of us? Have we had this before, or how have you handled this in the past?
This is very rare. We usually, we, what we've done in the past is through, uh, two thousand and four, and then these later code updates that we did, we will cut, we, we try and identify these split-zone properties and address them through an administrative, through our process.
Right.
And clean them up that way. Uh, this, this was just recently created through the Caulfield subdivision, so that's why this didn't exist when we were doing our, our code amendments and zoning map updates. But, um, especially in two thousand and four, when we went through, we captured quite a few split-zone properties and, and cleaned those up so that there were, they were won.
Right.
Right. So, did our geotech, um, ordinances, code changes pass the city commission?
Yes, they went into effect July thirty-first.
So, um, I've been looking at condition of approval number five. Shouldn't, shouldn't we get a new geotech report that, that would take into account what the new code says?
Well, the applicant is, um, entitled to the code that they submitted under, so since...
Except this is gonna be a different parcel once we change the zone.
But that's why they had the application before.
But it's, the, the code criteria we utilize is based on the date of submittal of the application, of the land use application. Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And, and, and I'm sure the applicant can talk a little bit more... And I'm sure the applicant can talk a little bit more about the engineered fill that's gone in there. So, it's not necessarily a steep slope issue. There's been engineered fill put onto that site to make it buildable. So, your concern about the steep slopes is...
Looked steep to me, yes.
But it's engineered that way.
Okay.
Yep. Rather than natural.
Thank you.
Okay.
I just have one thing. John Rippler, in his analysis here, letter, he said that the applicant correctly states that the original TIA predicted adequate operations at the intersection studied in the vicinity. Is he saying that there have been follow-ups that verify that? I guess what I'm asking is, in 2006, this impact study was done, have there been follow-ups to show that what was predicted actually happened? And I guess I'm kind of referencing the letter that Ms. Sargent had written. I'm just curious what...
Well, so, as part of that application, what they're required to do is look at existing conditions, future conditions, and then future conditions including this project at a date in the future. And that future conditions and future conditions with the site includes background growth in those trips, as well as applications that have already been approved that were, that now their trips need to be accounted for. So, those included trips from, like, Sequoia, Toronto Blankavet Landing, on the north side of Glen Oak Road by the high school. So, that included, you know, 300 and some units and trips there of which none have been built. But it included those in their study. And so, in Caulfield Place, they've actually only built a handful of the homes. So, a new study isn't going, you know, the full 94 lots haven't been constructed to be able to go count them.
Right. I'm not implying, what I'm saying is, in some of the other applications, has there been another TIA of this area or that specifically the Caulfield intersection since 2006?
There has not been. There's been absolutely no development. Well, I shouldn't say. There's, the amount of new homes that have come online has drastically reduced.
Right.
And this assumed worst-case scenario with their build-out, and it was still, with their trips, background trips, and all the other approved subdivisions all coming online, still met the level of service standards.
And so, what you're saying, Tony, is the reality of what's not been built is way below the threshold of what that 2006 study had said.
Yes. But even including those, it still met the level of service per the ITE trips requirement and the standards we use in determining level of service. If we went out there today and did trip counts, they're going to be way below what these assumptions are until all those houses come online. So, there's no way to ground truth until the homes are actually built.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? All right. At this time, applicant, go forward. You'll give us your name and city of residence, please.
And I guess just one more thing real quick before you start. The next person who comes in once all those homes are on is going to be the one who determines whether it's broken. It's always the next guy in who's going to be doing that later transportation study where it's going to find out.
Thank you. My name's Chris Goodell, with AKS Engineering and Forestry. Address is 13910 Southwest Gullberg Drive, Suite 100. That's in Sherwood, Oregon, 97140. The applicant, property owner, is Ryan Park Development. They're the same applicant and owner that developed the Caulfield Place Number One subdivision. I'd like to thank Tony and other city staff for their help preparing the application. The proposal represents an efficient use of the property. It's appropriate for the site, and it's, the proposed use is consistent with what's surrounding in the area. All those lots adjacent to and surrounding are going to be developed with similar housing types. I'd also like to thank you for your time this evening, and would appreciate your recommendation of approval for the project to the city commission. I think Tony did a really good job of explaining what the project involved, what it was about, and you had a couple of good questions about why it needed to be rezoned. We had met with Tony and discussed these same issues, and setbacks were one of the issues that came up others were, you know, what lot area do you apply to the project? We agree that it makes it more complicated to answer questions about a property. What, you know, somebody says, what are my setbacks? What am I going to build there? What's the uses that are permitted? It makes it more complicated when it's got two zones. And that's really all I have to add, and here to answer any questions that you might have of us.
Okay. Great. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman. Could you tell us a little bit about that engineered slope? What happens after the back end of that property? Once you start building, you fill that in some more. What it's built, talk to me about that.
Monty, you want to step in?
Monty Hurley, also with AKS Engineering, same address and so on. I'm a project engineer for the Caulfield Place project. What was put in there was engineered fill, and it was as a part of the Caulfield Place project. When it was completed, it was in the final geotechnical report, and so it was all put in per the applicable requirements. As far as the foundation, there will probably be some more fill placed in there to round that out because there's a little bit more land there now with the plot vacation that Tony referenced. And then, there'll be, all the footings for the homes will be engineered also. So, it won't just be a standard home footing. You'll have a structural engineer design the footings. Does that answer your question?
I think it does.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, I'll open the public hearing. I see there's no one in the audience. So, at this time, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring that back up to the commission for discussion and decision. Comments?
I would recommend approval of this. It seems like a logical extension of what's there already.
I second it.
Okay. So, we have a motion?
No, we don't yet.
I so moved.
Oh, all right. Now we have a motion. Commissioner Dunn.
I'll second it.
We have a second to buy Commissioner Lejois for approval.
We're recommending approval to the city commission for their hearing on August 19, 2009.
Precisely what I was going to say. Tony, would you please call the bill?
Commissioner Stein.
Aye.
Commissioner Groner.
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Chairperson Paul.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sitting through this evening's hearing. We appreciate it. Tony, anything for the commission?
So, we will be meeting on August 24th, two weeks from tonight. Were you comfortable with the conditions and the finding for the concept plan? Or would you like us to bring that back for the 24th to look at one more time?
No, we approved it.
You're good? Good to go?
For the Public Works?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. We will then issue that decision probably in the next two days. On the 24th hearing, it's actually going to be a work session. Dan Drenlaw, Community Development Director, is going to bring forward urban and rural reserves. You may want to go back to the last city commission hearing on Granicus and click on the last item on the agenda, which was brought forward by Commissioner Neely concerning urban and rural reserves and what's going on with Clackamas County. And there was some, quite a bit of discussion at the commission level, and it was sent back to the planning commission to look at those areas again. So, that'll give you some background of what the city commission was debating and what their concerns were, and then we'll be bringing that to you at the 24th in a work session to discuss those and look at the recommendations that we want to put forward.
Yeah. I was just saying, I just heard that we might have two commissioners that can tell that.
I have to check as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
But even with three, we're okay, right?
Yeah.
It's a work session, yes. And then, Pete Walter will also be bringing forward a resolution concerning Tree City USA, and he's going to walk you through kind of where we're moving with that. Moving forward, we're hoping to have a joint Planning Commission-City Commission work session, and I will follow up with an email, I believe it's in early October, where we're going to start addressing sign code as well as the Beaver Creek Road zoning language. Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan, the implementing zoning. We're envisioning that we're probably going to have quite a bit of the zoning language written for the Beaver Creek Concept, Beaver Creek Road Concept Plan. There was a lot of work that was done prior, plus we have that adopted document. So, we'll probably bring you a little bit more refined document for the code. For the sign code, we're going to start a little bit more general and try and get some feedback from both Planning Commission and City Commission, and then try to determine the best way to move forward on rewriting that document. I may try and bring that forward to just the Planning Commission a little bit earlier than that work session so we can kind of get a head start on that and get some of your general concerns. And if that does happen, what I'll do is I'll send you the existing code, researching other jurisdictions, kind of send you some snippets from other jurisdictions, and really just focus on, I think I'd have to start a big picture, you know, what are our goals and objectives for the sign code, rather than really getting caught up on some of the particulars that we will have plenty of time to hammer out, I believe.
Correct.
So, that's what we've got right now. We did receive an amendment for the Cove Master Plan, so that will probably be moving forward in the near future here. So, you'll be seeing that again. Trying to think, I think that's about all that we have coming in front of Planning Commission for the near future.
Okay. Very good.
The Beaver Creek Luba Appeal, is that over now?
No.
We're expecting a ruling from Luba on the 14th of September. It will have been a year.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's about a year, isn't it? Wow.
It's all right. It's a good placeholder on my desk.
Well, very good. Anything for the commission? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Welcome. Thank you for coming this evening, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.